Yes. Yes, I am in the meeting.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening for the March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Montesereno City Council regular meeting. Before this meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the city council regular meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and then able to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or on any agenda item, we are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to three hundred fifty words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to adhere to the typical three-minute timer laws. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are all not, we are all not in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by roll call.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the orders of the day? If not, let's go to the next one, which is the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Law, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge?
Yes, I'm honored. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. And we have a roll call is next. Please go ahead to go.
Councilmember Turner.
Here, here. Here.
Councilmember Lico. Mayor Petta, make a check.
Present.
And Mayor Wahi.
Present.
And we have a form.
Thank you.
Mayor, you are me.
I appreciate that. So there are no changes to the orders of day, as I understand it. We are honored to have our new police chief, Jamie Field, present today, and she'll be presenting to the council and to the whoever is listening in. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Hey. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this evening, I'll be presenting the biannual Montesereno Police Report. Los Gatos Montesereno Police Department has provided contractual policing services to the community of Montesereno since nineteen ninety-five. And this evening, I'll be presenting the biannual report to cover the months between July and December of two thousand twenty-one. They will encompass crime metrics, response times, traffic enforcement, or accidents, as well as significant crime summaries over that six-month period. Next slide, please. Next slide. Give me one moment. Sorry about that. Thank you. So that what this slide portrays is the calls for service over those that six-month period. So what you see there in dark blue is pretty consistent. That's where our officers are being called to respond. The proactive incidents include patrol checks, vehicle stops, or other kind of just in-person contacts that they take upon themselves. The priority one, and two, and three calls, we try to stay within the five, ten, and fifteen-minute response times. And you'll see that we're pretty close to those. Priority one refers to an immediate emergency with threat to life or public safety. So that would include an in-progress fight, fire, or like an injury accident. Priority two is an urgent emergency that requires an immediate response. And that would be something along the lines of a suspicious person, suspicious vehicle, reckless driver. And then priority three calls refer to barking dog alarms or blight-type concerns. Next slide, please. UCR stands for Unified Crime Report, and I'll go into that a little bit further and some of the changes that we saw over the last that six-month period on the next slide. But for this, the purpose of this slide, you'll see a comparison between two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one. And we thought that was important to compare those three years. As with COVID, we have seen some nuances. You may not see it so much here, because this is really just indicative of the crimes that fell within the eight areas of UCR for the timeframe of July through December twenty twenty-one in Montesereno. You may notice that there are nine crime categories on there. Assault was broken up. It's generally one within UCR, but it's broken up to show aggravated versus just a simple assault. I'm going to focus in tonight's presentation primarily on some of the crimes of the last three months of last year to tell some of the story there. But I do want to bring an attention to you under larceny for two thousand twenty-one. You may see an increase in larceny. And I want to tell you a little bit about what those larceny crimes entail. So that's really focused on theft. And what we saw was male theft predominantly is what's encompassing there, as well as theft of license plates, theft from open garages throughout the evening hours, and rummaging through unlocked vehicles is the other theft category that we primarily saw being responsible for those numbers there. The burglary number that you see down there at the bottom of four, I will go through some of those specifics in an upcoming slide as well. Next slide, please. So the next two slides will look similar to this, and they're really looking at that unified crime report crime statistics. And the reason for it being July, August, September, and October is because as of October one, under legislative mandate, all agencies had to shift to what is called NIBERS, or in California referred to as CYBERS, California Incident-Based Reporting System. And really what that's looking at is to get a more expanded view of what the crime information or crime data is including. What we have seen in unified crime report reporting, and I know this is going into some granular detail, but I think that it's important to know, is that there wasn't information on the victim previously on the date, time, location, or a victim's relation to the potential offender, if there was an arrest made, if it was cleared, or if it wasn't. So there's a lot more detail that's being provided for both transparency purposes and then to also provide us with better policing knowledge in terms of how to deploy our resources and better awareness for crime-prin purposes. This is being overseen by the Department of Justice, and it's actually the new incident-based reporting system is being implemented at a national level. But for California, there are some more detailed data points being included, and it's being referred to as California Incident-Based Reporting System. So since it was implemented as of October first of last year, we wanted to be consistent in the information that you were seeing on these graphs. And you will see that we don't have November or December included in here. And it will be a little bit different in terms of how this information is extracted for the next, for the future biannual report. So for two thousand twenty, under residential burglaries, you will see that there was a spike in September. But for two thousand twenty-one, it's pretty consistent across the board. The reason that we show the Los Gatos and Montesereno crime stats on these two slides, we felt that was important that Montesereno has kind of a overall view of what the police department as a whole is seeing. Since we are that neighbor, Los Gatos is the neighboring city to Montesereno, we wanted to at least share some of the crime trends overall in the two communities combined, since you saw the Montesereno specifics on that prior slide. So this is residential burglaries as well as the theft categories. Next slide, please. So here we see the reported stolen vehicles. You'll see that through two thousand twenty-one, those numbers remained fairly low and that there was a spike back in two thousand twenty. But this is just again an opportunity to compare to the crime that might be seen in Montesereno in this area was low. And I believe there was only one stolen vehicle throughout the six-month period that we're reporting on tonight. And then for assaults, we did see a spike in terms of assaults that we responded to as a police department. Although they remained relatively low, I believe it was in that single-digit range for Montesereno specifically. Next slide, please. So as part of our contractual services, Los Gatos Montesereno Police Department provides an additional four hundred and sixteen hours of traffic enforcement to Montesereno. And during the six-month period, we had documented two hundred and forty specific traffic enforcement hours during that timeframe. We also documented four accident reports. And the primary collision factor for those reports are shown here on this slide, and we thought it would be important to, again, provide that comparison overall of what we're seeing as a police department for that primary collision factor throughout the communities that we serve. So you'll see that there's unsafe turning movements and unsafe speed being primarily what the cause is for accidents. And that does fall within the four primary categories we see, or primary accidents that we saw here during that six-month period. Next slide, please. So the notable cases, and I had mentioned that previously, though, share a little bit more in terms of the significant crimes that we saw. And you'll be hearing about some technology as I share some stories related to these crimes that we have here on this page. And I'll go into that technology on the next slide. But first, I want to share a story about what happened in October. So in October, we, our officers, one evening responded to a call of a bike that was stolen from an open garage. As the officers arrived on, or were arriving on scene, they received information of a gray Tesla circulating in the area, believed to possibly be related to the crime. While canvassing the area, they contacted witnesses to the offense, and then also found out that those witnesses ended up being victims as well. Their vehicle was rummaged through and items were taken. Through video surveillance from the home, information from those victims, there was a partial license plate that was provided to that vehicle, to that gray Tesla vehicle. Technology that we've implemented over the six months referred to as FLOCK technology was able to assist us in gathering additional follow-up leads specifically to this case. What we later found out was that that vehicle was actually owned by a Montesereno resident and had been stolen in San Jose earlier that day and had not been reported. So the officers were able to do immediate follow-up on it, gather information on that full license plate, and enter it into this technology. In doing so, we were able to determine the route of travel that vehicle took into town and then also provide further follow-up to other local agencies. And several days later, that vehicle was actually located with some of the stolen property inside in the Palo Alto area. So that technology has allowed us to really both anticipate and do follow-up on criminal offenses so much more swift and be able to network with our law enforcement partners much more aggressively. And we were able to do that in this sense and give back some of the stolen property as well. So great collaboration through technology, through law enforcement partners, and through through the victims that were out there and just being very vigilant. They didn't have the whole license plate that they were able to capture and provide information that helped us in this investigation. Then in December, what we saw was a series of four residential burglaries. Each one of those burglaries were residential burglaries in which the back window to the residence was smashed and the homes were ransacked. And this seems to be something that we see in around the holidays as suspects are aware that the homes frequently might be, people might be on vacation, so there may not be anybody home. And I'll talk a little bit about vacation checks that we have to help in preventing this as well. But in some of these residential burglaries, there was follow-up done by our investigators through that FLOCK technology. And there was possible leads that were provided to law enforcement partners throughout our region to help in that investigative follow-up and continue that crime-fighting efforts. In addition, there is also male theft that we saw during the holidays. This is also a time where suspects are aware that folks may not be home, and they may go to the mailboxes and look inside, because frequently there might be gift cards or other items of interest in there. We did have one of these situations, and thankfully, due to the victim calling very quickly, there was immediate follow-up that was done, and video surveillance cameras were captured to be able to provide some investigative follow-up on the vehicles and suspect descriptions. So it's wonderful to be able to work with our communities closely in that manner, as it is absolutely helpful and imperative to help our investigative process. Next slide, please. So FLOCK Safety, this is, it's a partnering system with Axon. And Axon is technology that we use for our body-worn cameras as well as our in-vehicle or in-p patrol vehicle camera systems. So the ALPR stands for Automated License Plate Reader. It is not capturing the image of the driver in this case. Actually, if you were to look at a vehicle as a twelve o'clock fashion, it's capturing images from the five o'clock and seven o'clock positions, which really is capturing color of the vehicle. Gives us information on the model, the make and model of the vehicle, as well as the license plate to the vehicle. And it's been extremely instrumental on our ability to anticipate crime, to be able to deploy our resources effectively and do immediate investigative follow-up. Officers are able to receive information from surrounding areas and law enforcement partners on the license plates associated to crimes in other areas, program that information into this system. And then in that way, they are immediately alerted should that vehicle come into our area past one of our fifteen cameras that are implemented throughout Los Gatos and Montesereno, and then respond to that area and hopefully either identify that vehicle, take action if they're able to contact that suspect, or hopefully be able to thwart any further criminal conduct from occurring within our jurisdiction. And there are two FLOCK cameras within the community of Montesereno. One is privately owned by the Greenwood Lane community. The other one is positioned near Highway nine and Kido Road. In the last thirty days, that vehicle has captured almost one hundred and sixty-five thousand images of license plates. Those do not include unique license plates. So what I mean by that is there may be a vehicle that goes by that area frequently, so they're not unique. But just to give kind of a picture of how frequently the vehicles are traveling by that area and what is being captured. And this, like I said, that camera there at nine and Kido is one of a network of fifteen cameras positioned throughout Los Gatos, Montesereno. And you see that here in the picture on the screen that has circles around the area where there is a FLOCK camera position currently. So it has been a wonderful network, wonderful tool for us, and we know that other neighboring law enforcement jurisdictions will be putting, implementing these as well. So we only look for this network to grow as it's been very helpful. Next slide, please. And if you could bring up the pictures. Thank you. Over the last couple of years, we have really listened to the community and the concerns, concerns related to mental health and police reform. So here's some of the programs that we have implemented. First, I'll bring the attention to the dogs on the screen. That is Gary and JJ. Gary and JJ are therapy, part of our therapy canine program that we have implemented over the last five months. They are currently away at training, but their handlers are, one is a dispatcher and one is a detective. The purpose behind the therapy canine program is twofold. It's really focused holistically on wellness. So both wellness for our internal staff as well as the community members. These dogs can interact with the community members in times of crisis or during challenging moments, even with victims. And the thought behind it and the purpose is to alleviate any kind of pressures. And we can all relate to when you, when you pet a dog, that there's, it does help that kind of calming sense. It does take away some, sometimes some of that stress. And so that can be very valuable to both our staff as well as community members under stressful situations. So we have Gary and JJ that are now part of our police family here, and we look forward to introducing them to the community in the future. They will be back with us in April. So you will see more and hear more of them in the future. And then our Vulnerable Communities Response Liaison. So the liaison really is a conduit between resources throughout our community and throughout the region for mental health and homeless resources. And you'll see on the screen mobile crisis response teams. The liaison works closely with MCRT, the Mobile Crisis Response Team. And that team is made up of clinicians and therapists that are able to either evaluate by phone, come out to the scene, and then also provide sustainable and ongoing resources to both the family or the community member that's in need of mental health resources or may be in mental health crisis. And they can come out and partner with our law enforcement resources to be able to provide an overall assessment, immediate needs, whether or not a mental health need, not mental health hold is necessary, and really provide a broad view of, again, that sustainable outlook. Also, the Vulnerable Communities Response Liaison works closely with our homeless resources immediately within our community and throughout the region, and really stays close to the pulse of what the needs are and any concerns are as well. So he remains a community resource as well as a resource to us. The Community Service Officer is such a utility player for our law enforcement agency. And that is an unarmed individual that can respond out and do non-investigative follow-up reports, take property crimes, and also assist officers on traffic scenes also, where there might be parking enforcement needs and other needs throughout the law, throughout Los Gatos, Montesereno Police Department. Another program that I am very proud of is our Use of Force and De-escalation Simulator Training Unit. So that is a program that we put in place last year. We were able to purchase that, implement it, and it's a standalone unit that's in a room of its own. We have a lot of staff that have been trained in this model. It's a post-approved police officer standards, standards and training system. And the specific make behind that, it's referred to as Embarrassed. It's a virtual reality system. So we're moving into that, again, that new technology. And this involves two oculuses that the officers will dawn in the training environment. And there's operators that are there, safety officers as well. What it allows us to do is really provide stress inoculation for staff, sworn and non-sworn. And we're able to make adjustments in those scenarios, whether it be to a mental crisis or gender, race, different weapons that may or may not be introduced by the individual or be allowed to use or available to the officer as well. So it's a wonderful training opportunity, and we actually implemented this in our most recent Advanced Officer Training just this last Friday and received wonderful reviews. And that was our first time to utilize it, as it did take some time to get trained and really proficient in this program. So it's just wonderful to have that opportunity, to have that real-time training for our staff to really work on those de-escalation skills and get those reps in, as well as that use of force and de-escalation opportunities. The Ambulance Service Agreement and Juvenile Transportation for Mental Health Evaluation Treatment Program. So this is a contract that we were able to establish with a local ambulance company, the Silicon Valley Ambulance Company. And what it allows officers to do is when there is a juvenile experiencing mental health crisis and placed on an involuntary hold, meaning that the officer deems that that juvenile is either a potential harm to themselves or to others, that instead of transporting them in the marked police unit, that we can actually call out an ambulance service to be able to transport that juvenile to a mental health facility for further assessment and evaluation at no cost to the family if there should not be insurance support there as well. So we wanted to make sure that that was an option available to our community. And then just to expand a little bit further on that Advanced Officer Training and Crisis Intervention. We do continue to provide crisis intervention training to all sworn staff and all of our dispatchers. Our goal is to have all sworn and dispatchers trained with forty hours of crisis intervention training, and then also start implementing more frequently this new tool through that virtual reality system. And we believe that that's going to be very positive moving forward. Next slide, please. Community outreach. This is such a significant part of what we do and that police community relations that I really wanted to highlight some of the areas that we have touched upon, even during COVID, during the six-month period of July to December of two thousand twenty-one. So neighborhood watch, I think that we will see that increase in frequency and outreach. But during that six-month period, we were able to partake in two neighborhood watch opportunities. And what this entails is really focusing on making a more resilient community and bringing together those police community relations and partnerships, and focusing on emergency preparedness, crime prevention, and other tools available to the neighborhood that maybe we recommend can partner in or assist in, as well as being able to answer any kind of questions and concerns specific to that neighborhood. So focusing on any crime trends that they might be concerned about as well. Operation Care is a longstanding program that we've had that our dispatch center oversees. And we actually have two individuals within the Montesereno jurisdiction that are signed up for Operation Care. And what that is, is our senior community members that may be residing at home alone, may not see someone for a number of days. So our dispatchers call each and every day to check in and just have a small chat with them, just to make sure that they're doing okay, that they don't need our resources, or should they have any questions or have any needs. And actually, you'll see a picture here in the upper right-hand corner of when our community outreach coordinator, Jackie Rose, and our lead dispatcher, Christine Crossan, was able to go out and actually visit one of our Operation Care members in Montesereno, and they did go around and visit actually all of them. And it's just a wonderful opportunity to put a face to the names, especially as we navigate through the COVID times. CERT evacuation and water drills. So CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team. And we've really looked at focusing on the wildfire evacuation efforts and getting some, some training opportunities in for just being prepared and being resilient and also working with our communication system. While the wildfire evacuation drill that we did last fall was not within Montesereno, we included Montesereno CERT members, of which there are quite a few. And so they had the opportunity to work with us closely. Our CERT teams work all together, Montesereno and Los Gatos work together. And there's actually one neighborhood incident command post located at Dave's Avenue School. It was open five times during the timeframe that we're reporting out on tonight, so that they could work on and just practice on the communication abilities and just working on opening up that Neighborhood Incident Command Center as that is truly a force multiplier in the event of a disaster, whether it be a man-made disaster or a natural disaster. So in addition to the wildfire evacuation, we also did a water drill. And that water drill was conducted over at Calvary Church. We also included Montesereno and Los Gatos CERT involved in that. And that was if our water was compromised in some way, so that we would have an ability to provide water, drinking water to our surrounding communities. We partnered with San Jose Water in this effort, and it was actually really well-received. I believe we had about a hundred and fifty participants that drove through that day, and we were able to provide water too. So excellent drill and excellent opportunity. Vacation checks. So we encourage the community to sign up when they are out of town. It's not information that goes any further than with the police department, and that goes on our patrol check log. And it allows for our dispatchers and our sworn officers to be aware if somebody is out of town and to check on that home. to be aware if somebody is out of town and to check on that home. We were actually able to check on twenty-four homes during the timeframe that I had mentioned. Um, so I'm thankful that folks are taking the opportunity to utilize that. And I'll speak in a minute on uh ways to sign up for that. The Monteserino picnic was very well attended last year. Uh, we had our crisis response unit out there. You see the pictures here um right in center, um there in the middle. It looks like they are um working with the robot that is part of our, our crew team. And you'll also see there in the back, the crisis or the Community Emergency Response Team pop-up tent as we had both CERT and or DARK Team represented there, Disaster Aid Response Team. We also had some of our explorers uh represented there at the, the Monteserino picnic. So just great opportunity to come together. The new resident outreach, um that's where we will have our volunteers and policing go out and offer new resident packets to provide information on our community um to new residents within Monteserino. And there were, I believe, twenty-one new resident packets handed out last year. Again, our community outreach coordinator um really oversees that and that's Jackie Rose as well. Um, the youth and school support. So now that uh we are again coming out of COVID, there was a couple of opportunities last year for staff to engage. And that was uh with bike rodeo or officers are able to go out and do classroom visits, also provide information on um bike safety as well and just be, be there and have that connection with the youth early on and answer questions on what it is that police officers do as well as how we can be there and be assistance to school staff and the youth. Um, there was also a Boy Scout and Girl Scout troop from Dave's Avenue School that came and visited uh the Police Operations Building. And what we do is we, we give them a tour of the building. We talk about fingerprinting, um talk about the police officers' uniforms, the resources that we have and what to expect when there's potential engagement with officers. Um, so it's really important to have that uh engagement with the youth um ahead of time and being proactive. And then finally, I listed on their uh website that we encourage all community members to access. And that's lgpd dot crimegraphics dot com. That provides almost real-time information on crime that has occurred in Los Gatos and Monteserino. And it gives some detailed information, includes our arrest log on there, our media relations log. Um, it also allows for the individual to look at press releases and sign up if they have a video surveillance camera. Um, and they can sign up their video surveillance, their address of where the video surveillance camera is located. It doesn't mean that we can access that video surveillance camera. What it means is that goes to our Investigations Division as well as our dispatchers. So if there's an event that happens in that area, they know and are aware that there is a camera that they might be able to uh contact the homeowner and ask if there's any kind of investigative lead that came out um from what the camera may have captured. And then there's also the vacation check that can be signed up for on that site. So it's a wonderful site that can be contact, that can be uh looked up from, from the privacy of their own home to gather a lot of information on what is currently happening with our police department. Next slide, please. And that concludes the biannual Monteserino Police Report for this evening. And staff is available for questioning. That includes myself as well as our operations captain, Derek Moyn.
Uh, thank you so much, Chief Field, and thank you, Officer Moira, for also being here. That was a great presentation. Uh, and I think you're all very illuminated with everything you're doing. And especially, it's really good to see your effort to bring the community and have that community relationship. But because ultimately, people want to see a police department that cares for them and that you, you know, that you care for them and not see them as enforcers only. So that's wonderful. I'm glad you guys are putting effort into that. Uh, questions, Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you again, Chief Field, for your presentation and for being at the helm. I have a couple of questions. First of all, do you feel you have enough CSOs to be effective uh for going forward? Or do you feel like you could use more resources?
Thank you for the question. So we are in the process of hiring and recruiting. And so when I say that, that includes for both our sworn and non sworn staff. Um, so specific to your question, we do have an opening for community Community Resource Officer currently. Um, we do have one. And I should mention that the Community Resource Officer is um Community Services Officer is a part-time position. And it, we utilize that position in, in two ways. One, it's traditionally been almost a recruitment tool for us. We have actually, a number of our officers were previously community service officers for our community and just really enjoyed what they did and wanted to take that next step. The other aspect is that Community Services Officer position is a twenty-hour, generally a twenty-hour part-time position. And it's designed um for a uh, an kind of an intern, paid intern position. So they are um uh college uh students. So our current uh Community Service Officer, he's full-time in college. We work around his hours. And it's just a great opportunity to support them through college. And should they choose a law enforcement path, then we certainly um welcome uh their interest to, to join us. So um we, we are currently hiring in that position and uh look forward to an additional Community Service Officer joining us.
Okay, great. And I love the partnership that you formed with the, with the college student. That's fantastic, using resources that are available. Um, second question is, and this is just the second of three, that's all. Does the Mobile Crisis Response Team provide services once a juvenile has been released after having been in and on the involuntary hold?
Yes, so they are available to the family, um whether it be after or even during. So we have had the MCRT, Mobile Crisis Response Team, come out with our law enforcement officers and be on scene for a number of hours during that crisis. And they're available afterwards. And they're also available to provide those resources and they are provided to the family member. Because sometimes we recognize that the family member needs that ongoing support and that may not mean law enforcement support necessarily. But they do have outreach resources um that they're able to, to provide. So it is an ongoing, um, it's an ongoing, I guess, partnership for that family that doesn't always necessarily need us to be involved and we can kind of take that step back.
Okay, great, thank you. And last question is, is CIT uh part of the training in Use of Force?
Yes, it is. And that's that, the Crisis Intervention Training that I was mentioning, the forty hours that we really strive to have all of our officers involved in. Um, I don't have the exact number of officers that we still have remaining on that list as we did hire a few officers last year. Um, but we are identifying the, the opportunities because that training really does need to occur in person. And there was some delay during COVID for those opportunities to come up. Um, so now we are identifying those, those future opportunities and with staffing, getting our uh remaining officers through that training as swiftly as possible.
And for council's uh understanding, CIT involves being able to subdue a suspect without inflicting harm, correct?
Yes, it's really focusing on our verbal skills and de-escalating that situation before, before ever needing that, that, you know, having to get to that level of force. And that's what we really want to look to avoid.
Okay, great, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for the questions and thank you, uh, Chief Field and thank you, Officer Moira, for joining us. And we look forward to all the great work you're going to do for Los Gatos, Monteserino. Thank you. Uh, there's no questions from the public, I don't think. I don't, don't see any hands there. So we'll go forward with the next item of the agenda. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so. Are there any oral communications, uh, Michelle?
I do not see any hands up.
And how about any written communications that were given to us? None? So there's nobody, there's no written communication, so we go to the consent calendar. Uh, items one to eight, does anybody wish to remove any item from the consent calendar? Yeah, Councilmember, make a check.
Yes, I just wanted to uh acknowledge Susan Landry, uh council member from the city of Campbell. Uh, and she put together some uh Ukrainian lapel pins to show uh support and solidarity for the Ukrainians that are under attack. So I just wanted to acknowledge and thank her during the public comment period.
All right, thank you. Uh, anyone wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? If not, I'm going to probably remove uh item seven, that's a housing element report. So if you can discuss that a little bit further. Uh, anybody have any comments on anything else? If not, I appreciate a motion to approve the consent calendar except for item seven.
I moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lawler, second by, also number Turner, I believe.
Turner.
All right, thank you. Uh, roll call, please. Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Petrot, make a check.
You're muted. Make a check.
Hi.
And Mayor Lawton.
Hi.
That motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Uh, now turning to item seven, could we have the staff report on that, please?
Thank you. Um, this is Diana Perkins, the City Planner. Um, good evening, everyone. The um city is required to annually file a housing element progress report on May April first of every year with the state. The purpose of the report is to provide um an annual status on the progress made under the current um housing element in terms of new housing units issued as well as um the various programs, um the status of the various programs in our housing element. And uh before you tonight is the draft report um that we will file, assuming it's accepted by the council. And that completes the staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions tonight.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, I, uh, the thing that I wanted to make sure we all understood is, I'm sure everybody else does too. Uh, the arena allocations that we were required to have, and this is for the time period through twenty twenty-two, from two thousand fifteen to twenty twenty-two is the time period covered by this particular report. Uh, our allocation was sixty-one and we have actually built a hundred and thirty-four units. So we have far exceeded the allocation required for us and which gives us hope that the hundred and ninety-four we are required to do next, in the next eight years, starting twenty twenty-three, we should be able to meet. Uh, one thing I wanted to see if you had any chance, because we, we have kind of overdone the very low, the arena allocation is twenty-three and we're up to sixty-five. Uh, and, and we are, we are, we are not quite there for the low and the moderate, which is a thirteen arena allocation and we're only at one. Uh, I, I understand you were going to have a talk with HCD or somebody to see if the very low could count towards the low and the moderate or the above moderate. Did you get a chance to do that or did they get back to you?
Um, I wasn't able to get ahold of anybody at the state on HCD office, but I did speak with our consultant that we're working with on the updated housing element. And um for the, for our current housing element, if you have extra units in a lower income category, that, that's considered fine. So because we have so many um units in the very low, um exceeding the arena allocation, but below, we don't quite need it, those would be combined um as the state would view it. So that um the permits that we've issued would exceed our allocation for those two categories combined.
So, so I, I, I just want to make sure the state doesn't have, but I, I'm sure the consultant knows what he's saying. But at some point, it'd be nice to get the state to confirm that. So hopefully you'll get a call back from them or get that confirmed. Uh, because, and the same question I had is on the very low category. Uh, the reason the number may be so high is because a lot of people are just uh either not collecting rent because it's uh their relatives or somebody else, or they don't want to disclose it. And I'm, I'm, I, I want to know if you, of the sixty-five that you have, were you able to get a response from everybody that uh in that number? Or is that some that you didn't get a response on? And some you may think that they are collecting rent, but they're not telling you. I, I know that we had to figure out. But just, just as a guideline, did everybody respond on that, in that sixty-five?
So the sixty-five includes since the year twenty fifteen. So for the preparation of this year's report, we did send surveys to the fourteen um property owners who received building permits for new accessory dwelling units in twenty twenty-one. Um, we received back about five um surveys and they were all in the very low category. And so then we made the assumption for the surveys that we didn't receive that they would be the same. And that's um from my understanding, consistent with how the previous um annual reports have been done.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just trying to figure out whether it's appropriate. And again, it depends on, because I, I want to make sure we don't get nailed for not having the right numbers in the low or moderate categories. And if you did not get a response, you know, would it be better to assume that uh they're rented at whatever those units should be rented at approximately? Would that make a difference? So that, I mean, that's, you, you know, you want to give yourself some flexibility because if you don't have a response, assuming that they're in the very low income is one assumption. On the other hand, they could be rented and the reason they didn't respond is because they don't want to disclose their rent because of other considerations. And maybe the assumption should be that they really are rented at whatever the comparable rent is, which might be in the low or the moderate category. So I'll throw that out to you and uh, do you have any response to that?
Um, off, off the top of my head, my guess would be that um if we were to make that assumption, um I guess we could probably, um, sorry, I'm thinking off the top of my head. But I think what we could do um is revise the report a little bit before we submit it on April first. The total numbers, of course, won't change. But um ABAE, Association of Bay Area Governments, has worked with HCD to try and get a standard um policy about how to break out the income level categories for ADUs across the entire Bay Area region. And uh what they have worked with HCD on, and just recently uh we received direction that HCD has concurred with this um last week, is that they would categorize very low, low and moderate would each receive thirty percent of the um number of ADU permits um that have been issued. And the above moderate category would receive the last ten percent. So ABAE has done a survey of the region and that's where the average of the income categories fall um for ADUs. So for the um units that, or for the um ADUs that we didn't receive a survey return for, we could make that assumption of that breakout.
All right, so I, I guess we'll leave it up to you because the real question is whether that helps us to move it up from very low to low or moderate or whether it doesn't make a difference. Uh, anybody else have any questions? I, I see a council member make a check's hand up. Please go ahead.
Yes, I'm looking at uh the record and it says that there were fourteen new, for twenty twenty-one, there were fourteen new ADU permits, building permits. And final inspections for fourteen new ADUs and seventeen new single-family detached dwellings. So, and when I see it down below, so that, that's the fourteen building permits for twenty twenty-one. So, and it looks like that's a, basically, an ADU, I guess, takes less. If you issue the, the building permit in a year, it's fulfilled in a year. And I'm wondering kind of what the backlog is uh in Montalvo. Have all those, I think all the building permits have been issued, but they're not final yet. So that's my question, I'm sorry, uh, Diana. How many units have yet to be completed in Montalvo Oaks?
Um, I am looking that up right now. Um, I did speak with the um Construction Superintendent a couple of weeks ago. And he did indicate that um they expect to be completed by the end of May. But let me see here. Just one second, I'm sorry. So it looks like they have fourteen units um out of the thirty-six that have not received a final inspection. But I do believe most of those are, are obviously pretty close because they expect to be done in the next two and a half years.
And then, then those, those. Right, and then, then those, those, when they go final, when do they go into our arena numbers, the hundred and ninety three for the next cycle? Is that, is it when the building permit is issued, or when it goes final?
When it's issued. So we received the credits for these.
We've already got the credits.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I suppose if they don't build on the permit, then at some point it gets canceled, and then you can reissue it, I suppose. But most of these things are getting built as the permit is issued. Is, is there a timeframe within which the permit must, must be exercised and building must be constructed?
Um, so the building code requires that the permits, once a building permit is issued, that activity does not cease for more than one hundred and eighty days, which is about six months, and how we measure that is to ensure that they have a building inspection every six months.
So, so all these permits that have been issued, as far as you know, they have all been completed, or will be completed within the hundred eighty days? Or are there some that just got the permit issued and they're still thinking about it?
Um, on this list, I believe everything is underway. Um, oftentimes, the types of permits that end up kind of not following through on the proper inspections are smaller projects, interior remodels, water heater replacements, furnaces. But generally, the new construction and additions definitely get constructed and finalized.
Yeah, it's hard, hard to get the construction guys moving these days. Alright, so any, any other questions? Councilmember, please go ahead.
Yeah. I'm wondering, Diana, what the backlog is between uh, planning, development permits, something that's gone through site and architecture, but they haven't applied for their busy building permit and/or it hasn't been approved yet, you know? I'm just trying to figure out what that, that backlog is going to be that we're going to see flow through. Do you have any handle on that, just a ballpark?
Um, I would say, off the top of my head, for the projects that we've seen, you know, the last nine months or so through site and architectural commission, I would say a minimum of seventy five percent have submitted for their building permits.
Alright, so, so what I would suggest is for Ms. Perkins to go ahead and send the report out. I don't know if we need to see it again. But use her judgment on how to do the allocation on the very low and the low and the moderate. Would that work for you, Ms. Perkins?
That definitely works for me, yes, thank you.
Okay, well then, let me ask if, if stop, if there's any other questions. If not, let me ask if any of the people on the call have any, any individuals have any questions? Saying none, I'm going to bring it back to council and see if you have a motion to approve item seven, based on the comments I made that leaving it to Ms. Perkins to appropriately put the numbers in between the very low, low and moderate, as reflect the actual reality on ground. Councilor, make a check.
So moved.
And I need a second. Councilmember Lawler, you're on mute, but I guess you're seconding the motion, correct? Alright, so second from Councilmember Lawler. And roll call please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Hi.
And Mayor.
Hi.
That motion passes five zero.
Yeah, so the next item is a public hearing. This is item one on the calendar. It has to do with an application for site development on Greenwood Road. Staff report, please.
Um, thank you. This project is for a site development permit. That includes a single-story addition of one hundred and ninety-one square feet at the back of the house. So new and reconfigured covered patios, and also at the back of the house, that total net increase of five hundred and twenty-eight square feet. And a new four hundred and sixteen square foot detached pool pavilion. The project also includes a tree removal permit application for the removal of five trees due to their location near or over the proposed construction. And this project is before the city council tonight, due to an existing legal non-conforming condition at the, at the project site. The impervious coverage is in excess of what is currently permitted under the zoning district regulations. These conditions were created before the zoning requirements changed to limit the impervious coverage to our current standards. Where a lawful but non-conforming condition exists, the Montessorino Municipal Code allows an applicant to change the existing non-conforming condition only when the city council determines that the changes proposed would result in conditions that are more compatible with the zoning district. So in this case, the existing impervious coverage does exceed our current standards. Um, with the additional coverages proposed for the additions and the patio covers, the applicant is proposing to offset that by removing some existing paved walkways on the site and also replacing others with previous pavers. This project was heard by the Site and Architectural Commission at their meeting on March second. Other than the project applicant, no members of this public spoke about this item during that meeting. And the commission recommended that the city council approve this project. Staff also recommends that the council approved the draft resolution, which approves the site development permit and the tree removal permit with the attached conditions. And determines that the proposed reduction in impervious coverage results in a condition that is more compatible with the zoning district. This concludes the staff report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, is the, is the existing driveway impervious as well?
Um, I believe it has pavers.
Okay.
Yes, and there's actually a driveway, a circular drive in the front of the house. And then the driveway that accesses the garage at the side yard. And yes, the driveway in the front of the house is previous, or it's impervious pavers, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions from council? If not, are there any, was, any, any members of the public who wants to address this matter? Saying none, we'll bring it back to council for discussion and a motion. Oh, we do have a hand up? Okay, alright. Let's go ahead, recognize it, gentlemen. Mr. Lindquist, please go ahead.
Yes, I'm Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening, and hope you're all doing well, representing Mr. Heffernan, the property owner. And I, I was hired to assist them in the planning of this facility and processing the various entitlements that are needed to move this forward. Ms. Perkins has done a fantastic job. I almost wasn't needed, and so I appreciate all her help and guidance through the process. I do have Chris Weber and Andrea Vida here. Chris Weber is the architect and Ms. Vida is the landscape architect. We're all here to answer any questions, should you have them, but again, Ms. Perkins has done a fantastic job representing the project. I think it's very well balanced, and we appreciated the site and architectural committee's recommendation to the council. Again, if you have any questions of us, we're here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you for putting together a good packet for everybody to be able to go through it. Councilmember Make a Check. I'm sorry, any, anybody else in the public who wishes to address the council? If not, we'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Make a Check, please go ahead.
I looked at the plans and then drove by the site. It's very private. It's on a very flat piece of land. I understand the legal non-conforming nature. The only, and I think it, it's a beautiful property. I think it's going to be really nice. It's super private. I'm just wondering if any of the runoff from the new roof structures, if that can go into a a drainage location on site, so that the, so that the runoff stays on the property and is absorbed into the soil. That's my only comment or question. And my comment is, I think it's a great project, and I'd like to support this.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Councilmember Lawler has her hands up, so we'll go ahead with that, and then we may come back to the applicant and the architect to answer the other questions. Go ahead, Councilmember Lawler.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, no, I don't have any questions, other than to say, you know, very thorough plans. It looks fantastic. It is a beautiful property, and I appreciate the diligence that you've taken to make sure that this, this is, that this goes well and that privacy is handled. And again, thank you for a very thorough presentation.
Alright, so anybody, anybody else on the council have any questions or comments? If not, if you could have, if Mr. Lang, I guess I see your hand up for Mr. Langquist and Adrian Vita. Either one of you want to address us, please go ahead. And basically to respond to Councilmember Make a Check's question. You're on mute, Ms. Vita. Okay, go ahead.
Council, are you able to hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear you. I can't hear you now.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you, councilmembers. It is our intent to retain the water on site. We do have some limitations, though, because of the existing facilities that are there. We don't want to rip up the entire landscaping. But that, that we're touching, the intent is to retain that and have it recharge the groundwater. So we'll be using our, our best judgment as we move forward with the project.
Thank you, and I see the hands up from Mr. Weber and Ms. Vita. Did, did either one of you want to address council also?
Hello, this is Chris Weber. I, I, I wanted to concur that the site does have an existing stormwater retention system and that the existing, or excuse me, the new rainwater leaders will tie into the existing system, so that all the water is kept on site.
Good. I see the hand up for Ms. Vita, too. Did you want to address us also?
I was, I was just gonna actually say the same thing about the stormwater retention, so.
Alright.
I believe we're good.
Excellent, thank you so much. Back to council, any other discussion question? Councilmember Make a Check, please.
If there's no other discussion, then I would make a motion to approve it as submitted with the resolution as submitted.
Thank you, second.
I'll second.
Councilmember Turner, second, so we have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
I.
I.
That motion passes five zero.
Okay. Sorry about that. Appointment to fill the vacancy on the Modesty, a Better Streets Commission, resulting from a vacancy. And there's a staff report on that, if you could go ahead and present that.
Hi, Mayor, this is City Manager Steven Leonardi. Due to a recent resignation of a Better Streets Commissioner, we have the opportunity to appoint a new commissioner this evening. And fortunately, during our last recruitment effort, we had more applicants than positions available. So the timing is well. Staff is recommending that council appoint Kim Hanarehen, who applied for the Better Streets Commission just about a month ago. I think we went through the process. That concludes the information we have for you on this item, and we are available for questions if any. Thank you.
Thank you. And is the applicant available by any chance? Yes, and I don't see her here, so I assume she's still interested. Has anybody checked with her to see if she's still interested?
Hi, Mayor, this is the city clerk. I did reach out to Ms. Hannah and she is still interested.
Yeah, yeah, I think I saw that in the report also. Thank you so much. Alright, any questions from council? If not, we take it to the attendees, if there's anybody from the city who's to address us on this matter. Saying none, back to council, either for a discussion or a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Hanarehand to the Better Street Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Lawler, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I.
Hi. Thank you. So that one is item, the new business item number two was discussed and considered assigning a council member to serve as council liaison to the Better Streets Commission. Uh, staff report along, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager Steve Leonardi again. So another Better Streets item, two in a row. This was suggested at an earlier council meeting, should there be a council liaison to the Better Streets Commission. And that item is open for discussion among all five council members this evening to determine if this is something council desires to do going forward by appointing a council member to the commission as a liaison, council liaison. We are available for questions.
Alright, and has that been done before? Has there ever been a council liaison to a Better Streets Commission? Are you aware of that?
Not, not that I, we, we did not know how, we did not locate that information in the, the record. So I do not believe that is the case. The Better Streets Commission is not very old. So I believe that this has never been done before at the city.
Yeah, well, the Better Street Commission's been doing a great job, and our streets are seeming to be coming along well. Alright, let me ask council if they have any questions, Councilmember Turner.
Yes, I, I just wanted to find out, you know, what are the duties of this council liaison that we're gonna have? That's over and above what the, what the Better Streets Commission people are doing.
I think that is up to the council to define the duties. This is just a, an idea. Perhaps council can weigh in on, on what they think would be a good idea, or perhaps I think it was Mayor Pro Tem Make a Check who recommended the idea, he could weigh in on his ideas of what those duties might include. But as mentioned by the mayor, Better Streets Commission's been doing a wonderful job, as well as our staff. Engineer Jessica Khan doing a great job, so.
Okay, so that would be, that would be part of our discussions, I guess. Do we have any other questions for staff? If, I, I assume not, so anybody on the public have any questions on this particular item? If not, I will bring it back for discussion, and it's the time for, I guess, Councilmember Make a Check to answer that question, if you would like to.
Sure, so one of the things that I have been doing is working with the West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority. And we went through the, let me back up, the hauling contract is coming up. And in that, I was very curious as to why the city Montessorino didn't have a road impact fee. And I received documentation from city engineer Jessica Khan on that, including the actual road impact fee that was done in, I believe it was twenty seventeen. And the council meeting minutes, which were very exhaustive. And it seemed that there was, the reason why it didn't go through was there wasn't a lot of communication with respect to the road impact fee and how that would work its way through. And I think there's an opportunity to, for increased communications. And rather than council doing it, I thought that's something that the, that our Better Streets Commission could do, because they were not, they were, they were only formed, I think, in twenty eighteen or so. I believe Councilmember Lawler was one of the first members of the I believe Councilmember Lawler was one of the first members of the Better Streets Commission. And I ended up having a conversation, I met with the Chair of the Better Streets. And he indicated that they would appreciate more direction from council and more of a, of a dur, and interlocking with council on this so that they understood where they should be going during their tenure as a commission, as commissioners. And that's when I thought, well, you know, there's a number of issues that we've got that could be helpful. And I didn't want to just go and speak with the Better Streets Commission without some sort of acknowledgement by council that that's a good idea. So, and when we talked about this several meetings ago, our city attorney said you can't assign a liaison. It should go and be a, a agenda item because it's actions required. So that's when I thought, okay, well, let's put it on the agenda and, and move it forward. So that's kind of the background, and I do appreciate that as a liaison that I would be able to attend their meetings and have discussion with them so that there would be a tighter integration with city council, but I wouldn't have any influence over any decision making that they have. Their decision is their decision. And as with site and architecture, you know, if, if they're gonna recommend something, generally speaking, they're all extremely competent and I would respect any decision that they have. So that's kind of the background. I hope that answers Councilmember Turner's question on this.
Thank you for that response. Any other questions or discussion? I'm sorry, somebody else to speak.
And I'm sorry, I just wanted to also mention that I think we could have two liaisons. So if there was another council member that wanted to do that, I would obviously be, be open and welcome that. But no one else seems to have, have offered to do so. So, but I think that that's important, that it's, it's not, quote, just me. It would be, you know, one or two.
Okay. Anybody else have any input, discussion? Councilmember Turner? Nope. All right, Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was one of the first appointed to the newly, newly formed Better Streets Commission. And my, my understanding at the time was that it was designed to, to obviously deal with the poor status of our streets in our neighborhoods, particularly our street that had a bunch of potholes. And so Jessica can answer this question. The whole point was we create, you know, that's what drove the PMP program, which had the, which had the goal of getting all of our streets up to a very good, you know, very good condition so that the annual upkeep of these roads would be very, very cost effective. So I guess my question is, this commission was designed for a very specific purpose. And once that purpose is accomplished, what would the future of this commission look like? And how, how would it move forward or would we need it? And so where does having a liaison come in? Does that mean finding other opportunities for this commission? I mean, I really, I guess it's really a question of what do we see as the future for this commission? And maybe, and maybe our city engineer might have some thoughts about that.
Okay, so before we turn to the city engineer, any other members of the council that have any questions or comments? If not, city engineer Jessica Khan, I see you're available on Zoom. If you could please answer that question.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So the purpose of the Better Street Commission, forgive me, I don't have the Muni code in front of me, is beyond just the initial, their initial formation of improving the city roads. They're also to review potential projects for not just road condition, but also complete streets and active transportation projects. Oftentimes, to get funding from different, from the VTA or from the state, you're required to bring those type of projects through a recommending body in your city, and that's who it is for the city of Montesquio. It's also reviews our safe routes to school programs and kind of like ongoing projects. So while it was initially formed to address a specific problem and road maintenance is always an ongoing issue, it also, the commission weighs in on other issues, and there's also specific items that they are charged with in the municipal code. But again, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it is codified.
Okay, thank you. No, that, that's actually very helpful because then, then I can see a, a reason for having a liaison to, to guide the future development of this commission. So I, I would be open to the idea, and I would certainly be happy to join in that enterprise as well. So thank you for your answer.
Excellent. Yeah, I think that's helpful in. Ms. Khan, do you find the Better Street Commission playing a helpful role with whatever you're doing? Are they interfacing, interacting with you? How is, how active are the members right now?
Absolutely. They're very active. They're very willing to participate even outside of the meetings. For example, right now, we're working on our update to our bicycle and pedestrian master plan that includes some walks around town with the consultant, and I've had commissioners volunteer to do that, to have the everyday resident perspective. So yes, they are, they're very active and very willing participants.
Okay, and do you think they'll appreciate hearing a member of council liaison with them?
I believe so, especially during the initial formation of the commission. They requested to have a little more guidance from council that hasn't come up explicitly lately, but it is definitely something that has come up with the commission in the past.
Okay, great. Thank you for your comments. Any other discussion, Councilmember Lawler?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up with that. I think it's also could be very helpful, just, just in having a cohesive, a cohesive group and them feeling connected with city council and potentially maybe encouraging some of those members to ultimately run for council. So I think it actually serves quite a few purposes.
This is, it's actually, it's good stepping stone, I guess, in a way. All right, any other members of council have any questions, discussions? If not, I guess the first motion is gonna be, should we have a liaison? And then the second part of that thing would be, who should be the person who's representing city council as a liaison? So I, I wanted to break that up, so let's, if that's okay with you guys. So, so I'll make the motion as to whether city council should, I moved that the city council should have a liaison with the Better Street Commission. Can you get a second on that? Councilmember Turner. Second that. Councilmember Turner, you told the second, seconding on it. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Petent Mechacheck.
I.
And Mayor Lawler.
I.
That motion passes by zero.
Yes, we broke it up into two parts, and now the question is, who wants to be on there? If you want to nominate yourself, that's fine. If somebody wants to nominate you, that's fine too.
I have a question, Mayor. Is it possible for us to have two, or is this a, there needs to be only one?
Attorney Rudy can probably answer that question. I think two is probably okay because that's a hard number, but I would welcome Attorney Rudy's input on that.
I don't see any reason you couldn't have to. I just don't know if you need to have two as a practical purpose. You could also just have one and an alternate.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Councilmember Lawler.
I nominate Council, Mayor Pro Tem Mechacheck to the position. And whether or not we need an alternate, I, I'll be happy to be the alternate. I know we have a reg, a regular and an alternate for youth commission as well.
That sounds like a good way to go. Councilmember Mechacheck, I may approach him, Mechacheck, sorry.
I would accept the nomination, and I would very much appreciate having Councilmember Lawler as an alternate because, you know, in, in case I couldn't make a meeting or something like that. So I very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, I made the first motion, so I'll make the second one too, moving Councilmember Mechacheck to be the liaison for the council to the Better Street Commission. And I suppose we should put some reporting requirements. You get back to us every quarter or so at least. And then having a, a Councilmember Lawler as the alternate on that. That's my motion. Can I get a second on that? Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Turner, you told seconds that. Roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Councilmember Ufo. Mayor Petent Mechacheck.
I.
And Mayor Lawler.
I.
Motion passes by zero.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, and I think that'll serve the council well. Next item has to do with the conduct of city council and board commission meetings in person or in public and methods of public participation. So if you can get a report on that, please. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager Leonardi. Back in March 1st of 2022, the council extended the remote meeting practice that we have been utilizing for about two years now. And we had a discussion about when can we go back to live meetings. There has been discussions about hybrid meetings, live meetings. There has been discussion about continuing the meetings as we have them now. And we are looking for direction from council, whatever that direction may be. Staff is prepared to go forward with it to take any of those approaches mentioned. I think you're all familiar with the different options, of course. A hybrid meeting would mean that some council members present and others not. Members of the public may or may not be present. Of course, the live meeting is the way we used to do business. It's been so long that we almost can't remember. But that's when we are all in person in the chamber, and all the public would come in the chamber as well. And of course, the way we are doing the meetings now, there is one carve out where if council decided to go back 100% live, that we have a device that would allow our city attorney to log into the meeting remotely. And I think that is important because they don't have to disclose their location as the current law states with council members, should we go back live. Now, again, that's all up to the suspension of the Brown Act and when that will come back in its full form, if it comes back in its previous form. Because there was amendments headed through the state assembly with a bill that could change some of the rules with that. With that said, again, we're looking for direction. I want to commend City Clerk Michelle Estabio on this one because she has done a lot of work, and she is available for questions as well as myself. That concludes my comments. Oh, we did recommend that if we are going back to in-person meetings, we will go back after June 30th, after the adoption of the budget. So we'll just start with the brand new fiscal year 2023. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the staff? Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Mechacheck?
I guess this is for our city clerk. Were you the one that did the informal survey?
This question has been posed to the city clerks throughout California, and I extrapolated data from city clerks, city clerks in particular in San Faria County. I just wanted to clarify that virtual, I'm sorry, hybrid in the survey means that the council members are in person, that the public has the option to attend in person or attend virtually.
Okay, and so when I look at the survey, which I thought was extremely valuable, I look Saratoga, it's virtual, virtual, Los Gatos, virtual, virtual. And they're kind of adjacent to us, I suppose Campbell is hybrid, hybrid. And Los Altos is virtual, Los Altos Hills, virtual, virtual. So it seems to me that that our neighboring or adjacent cities are kind of virtual. Is, was there, do you have any idea on when they could change that? And maybe this is for City Manager Leonardi. You mentioned if we were to go to a hybrid, that would be starting July 1st or starting in July. But do you have any informal information on that, City Clerk?
Well, yes, I, I spoke, I spoke directly with the city clerks of Los Gatos and Saratoga. Los Gatos, they're kind of in a holding pattern, conversations with this, Los Gatos City Clerk is, they're looking at going back to in person or not going back, but deciding that after June 30th, when the order is expected to expire. Saratoga also, they, they had their, I think it was last week where they had a meeting discussing this, and the recommendation was, are the council decided to wait until June 30th as well, after the emergency order expires.
So they are waiting to make a decision on going, going to in person after that, or they have already decided that they will go after?
I know, I know Saratoga is waiting to make the decision because a few council members were still not comfortable meeting in person. So they decided that they, they will postpone the decision until closer to the June 30th date. And for Los Gatos, I get the sense it's the same. She was very, she basically said there, there's no discussion on it, that they're still going virtual until they decide not to, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes, so if I may add to, to what Michelle did, I actually attended a meeting of different council members from different cities in Northern and Southern California. And I basically asked them, what are you planning to do? Are you planning to go back to a virtual media, stay virtual, or, or are you going back? And, and let me just give you a report that I have. So the city of Pleasanton has, only the council members are meeting. The, the public is not invited on, to, to go onsite. Dublin is the same way. Lafayette is only Zoom meetings. Ojai or Ohio, I don't know how you pronounce that. It's, it's also Zoom meetings only. Brentwood, Los Altos, Palo Alto is hybrid. Redondo Beach is Zoom. Santa Monica is hybrid. Sacramento, the city of Sacramento is actually all Zoom. Cupertino is all Zoom and Saratoga is all Zoom. And, and they only, they will plan to meet in June, the end of June, to decide whether they will go Zoom or virtual, or remain virtual. So that's my report, because Mayor Alahi, you said it would be good to have other cities input into this.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that information. That's very, very helpful. And, and it adds into everything else we have. Any other council member comments, questions? Okay, any member of the public wishes to address this issue? One, one question I had, June 30th, is that the magic date when the governor's order regarding Zoom meeting runs out? Where is that date coming from?
Could you ask that question again, please?
I'm asking if June 30th is the magic date that we have to, that we are leaving until June 30th to do virtual meetings or Zoom meetings?
Yeah, June, oh, sorry.
I will answer that. The most recent governor's executive order begins winding down various other governors' executive orders with respect to the State of Emergency Proclamation and other actions the governor has taken with response to the COVID pandemic. Many of the provisions, that executive order basically says that many, that a handful of provisions will continue at least through June 30th. Because the governor can't make executive orders until, as long as, unless there's a state of proclamation declaring the existence of emergency, we accept, we expect that the emergency will last at least through June 30th. So basically, after that point, the governor is likely to reevaluate whether or not to terminate the state of emergency. As long as the state of emergency is still in effect, cities can rely on the provisions of the government code as enacted by AB 361 that allow for purely virtual meetings or that allow for councils to meet and exclude members of the public from showing up and having, you know, not having to have a physical location. So basically, after June 30th, we think that at some point, the governor will probably wind down that executive or the state of emergency. But as long as it's still in effect, the council can continue to meet. Um, but as long as it's still in effect, the council can continue to meet um in a purely virtual fashion or in, it can meet in person, but you know, require members of the public to appear virtually.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Uh, any, anyone else have any other questions? All right, I don't think I've got to the, okay, councilor.
You can, you can go to, go ahead and public comment, that's fine.
All right, any member of the public have any questions or comments? All right, none, seeing none, let's go back to the city council. Go ahead, councilor.
Thank you. Okay, so um, couple of questions. It, would the hybrid model create more of a burden for staff? Um, because my my thinking is, you know, June thirtieth is the end of the fiscal year, so it actually kind of makes sense that we just wait till the end of the fiscal year, and then we have July off, and then we start the new, we start the new council session uh in person. Um, but I wanted to know if the hybrid model presents uh is it an onerous task for staff? Is it, is it easier having people in person? Is it confusing for our residents if we're in person but they're not? I mean, these are all things that we have to consider. I would love to be in person, but I'm just wondering now if it's just too confusing for everyone, because everything's been quite confusing over the past few months.
Uh, yes, the um technology, technological, technological part of it could be confusing to to our residents. Um, I did speak with our IT consultant regarding our options on going hybrid. And they did say it is feasible. We do have the technology, the cameras, um, the bandwidth to do that. The only um, I guess difference um, in instead of um just myself being at the meetings, uh, the deputy city clerk would be attending, so one can handle, you know, the virtual part of it, and another can handle the live part of it. Um, that's the only logistical change that I personally have made. Um, otherwise, it's just educating educating our residents on on the hybrid um option.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or?
Mayor, if, if, Mayor, if I could add to um
his words.
Staff's comment, um, what we do for council, we also must do for all of our boards and committee commissions, um, members. So if we decide to go hybrid, we would have to do it for, you know, ask all of our commissioners to come back in as well um to attend in person. But I just wanted to clarify that point.
Thank you. Um, any other questions, discussions? Uh, one question I had, I mean, can we, I mean, we could say we will go uh person after June thirtieth, which really means August. But for example, when we have a strategy session or a budget session, could we make exceptions and say, okay, in those sessions, we're going to meet in person as much as possible? Or do we have to say no? I mean, can you pick and choose, put some sessions on a personal basis, like a strategy session would be good to do it in person? Uh, but some of these council meetings, I, the Zoom works, seems to be working fine. Uh, attorney, is that an issue? If you decide to go person in some and not go in person and so?
So um, with respect to if you, the the main question here is, are you having the public show up? Because in order to have a meeting where the public is not allowed to show up and give public comment in person, uh, you need to be making the findings required by A B three six one. Um, and then as long as you make those findings, you can decide whether the council wants to meet in person and exclude the public um from, you know, appearing at council chambers um or not on a case-by-case basis.
So we could modify the findings we make today to say uh, well, we will continue with hybrid, but council doesn't have the right to go ahead and decide to make to for themselves to meet in in person.
Uh, I think so. Um, you know, the findings that you would be making are the same either way.
Okay.
Um, but there there definitely are cities that have the practice of council shows up, meets in chambers, but they exclude members of the public in order to try and limit the number of people that are in council chambers and minimize the size of these meetings, you know, out of concern of spreading yeah, COVID nineteen.
All right. Any other discussion?
So as a follow, oh.
Good.
As a follow-on question for that, just for my clarification, edification. If we want to have our strategy session or a budget discussion, working discussion, we could meet in person for that, and the public would attend in virtual? Or would that be closed to the public? Full stop.
So it would need to, you 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 can't have a meeting without inviting the public. So the question is, is are you allowing them physically into chambers in person? Or are you providing a virtual option instead? Those are your two options. Um, your, your third option is you allow them in person and then also allow the public to appear virtually if they want. Uh, but the 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 first question in terms of how you guys want to proceed is, are you going to allow the public in chambers?
The public has to be able to attend the meeting, ask questions. Uh, when is our budget session? Uh, Steve, Steve, uh, Michelle, if you could answer that, and when is our strategy session? Have those dates standing?
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. Next week, a week from today, will be our strategic goals session. And the budget we have scheduled for June twenty-first, although we will have a couple of pre-budget meetings uh after the strategic goals period, probably um May timeframe.
So if if we say we're going to do a study session in person, or as as many council members can attend, I don't think we'll make the requirement that everybody has to show up, that might give us a chance to check out all the good computer equipment we have. And then also set up the budget session in person. Uh, and then leave the other ones as they are, with the public joining us by by Zoom, yeah. Or if they want to come in person, they could do that, too. Is that possible? Can we set that up for a study session in two weeks? Technically, Michelle and I.
Thank you, Mayor. So our um, our goal-setting session is a week from today at seven P M. So that's just one week. If you wanted to pick a date certain where you would like council to come into the chambers and then have the public be able to zoom in remotely, we could probably use about thirty days notice. So for instance, tonight is the fifteenth of March, we could shoot for mid-April. Just so we can run a trial meeting. I guess that would put us at um April nineteenth meeting. We can run a trial meeting first, just make sure we have everything operating efficiently.
Okay. Thank you for that. So this, uh, we we couldn't do the uh strategy session on the goal-setting meeting next week. But you think we could do something on the middle of, if, if, uh, on April nineteenth? Uh, so that that might, you know, I I think maybe we're trying to make sure we get everything lined up. And at least sign that date for our trial run, but keep doing the Zooms through June thirtieth. And council members would be encouraged to participate in person. And I assume uh, you know, most of us can do that. And then, but continue with other ones still on Zoom. Is that something uh you guys want to comment on? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, this is a question for our city attorney. Once we go back to uh in person for a city council, it's not optional. You must attend. Do you have to attend in person, or can you also attend uh via Zoom or virtually? That's a question for city attorney.
So basically, the rules are, uh, if you uh make the findings required by A B three six one, you can decide what format to host your meeting in uh and whether or not to exclude the public. If you don't make those findings, uh, the regular uh teleconference rules under the Brown Act apply. And that means that you have to one, have a physical in place, uh, physical location for the public to show up. The public has to be allowed access to every location you teleconference from. So if a council member wants to continue to appear virtually, well, we have to notify the public of where they're participating from, and additionally, the public has a right to show up to that place to make their public comments. So that unfortunately is the the Brown Act requirement um under, you know, non-state of emergency times.
Okay, so it sounds like what we need to do is basically have a resolution that says we make the findings required to to be able to continue the Zoom meetings. But as a council, uh, we are going to be doing a in-person meeting uh on April nineteenth, and also on the pivoted meetings is June twenty-first. And also, but also keep keeping in mind, uh, if if council members cannot show up in person, they can also show up by Zoom. Would that work for uh as a motion?
That works for me.
So are you making the motion?
I'm making the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second. Uh, and roll call, please.
Councilmember.
Public comment?
Oh, sorry, yeah, any, any members of the public wish to comment on that motion? And I think I may have asked already, but that's fine. Let's, any, any further discussion, since I bring it back to council? So we do have a motion. Let's go ahead and do the roll call.
Councilmember.
You're on mute. Yes.
Councilmember.
You're on mute. Okay. Now you're okay, councilor Turner?
No. Councilmember.
Yes.
Mayor.
Aye.
And Mary.
Aye.
That motion passes.
Thank you, and I think that was a last matter on our regular agenda, so then we go to our unfinished business or committee commission reports. And can we get some committee commission reports? This time, I don't have anybody making any reports. Whatever request next time. Uh, this, 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 if you could rather than just saying, uh, heading committee commissioner, let's put the name of all the commissions that we have as a, as a checklist. So like, we have six or seven commissions, and so each one is identified. So hopefully, we can, it'll remind us that we need to say something on all the committee commissions that we are on. Hopefully, that might be a good way of doing it. Uh, councilor.
I'll go ahead and report that, well, Valley Water meets four, four times a year, so our our next meeting is coming up, but I will report that Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority, which also only meets four times a year, has been meeting once a month for the uh state of emergency resolution. So there's, but there's really, that's all I have to report.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Yeah, no, I I think if it does a checklist there and comes up in the agenda, then we might be able to jot a few things on it. So we can keep each other apprised of what is going on. Uh, any other committee commission reports? And I I, and I think I I joined these two with the council member comments at the same time. So if you have any comment, comments or any committee commission reports, please go ahead and share those.
Oh, I'll.
Yeah, councilor.
I'll have.
Important, make a check, correction.
I'll have something to report at our next meeting, uh, because I've got a number of meetings that are upcoming uh for the commissions that I'm on.
Thank you. And then, uh, yeah, councilor, please.
Thank you. Um, I I just wanted to raise the issue um first and uh of the issue with the email and I T issues that have come up. Um, the city manager and the new I T provider apparently have uh known about this since December, when the transition began. We're now three months later when this emergency arose and the city email collapsed. And uh, still no solution in sight. Hopefully, the city manager will have a report about what went wrong and what's being done to solve it, uh, and uh where we go from here on this issue uh during the city manager report. So I wanted to bring that up and uh express my deep concern that uh we've been on notice for three months, and apparently nothing was done about this issue.
So should we put that on a future agenda item?
I'm looking forward to the explanation first, and uh then we'll look into it further and figure out what's happened, and the I T committee can take a look at that in more detail as well.
All right. Anybody else have any other item to discuss, questions?
Well.
Yeah, councilor.
If I may, this is the council member comments. I just wanted to um encourage residents to use the vacation check uh service provided by our police department. It's fantastic. I know my house has been one of the twenty-four. I always use it. It is a great deterrent to crime, and it gives everyone a sense of security, and you're already paying for it, generally speaking. So I highly recommend our residents use it.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent suggestion. I think uh we were a really good police department, and uh uh, that'd be great. Any other comments, discussions? If not, I would request the city manager to respond to Mr. Yourthold's comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the question. I have an extensive dialogue of emails between myself, um, Mr. Rudin, the previous I T vendor, as well as the new um I T service regarding uh the transition into the service. And I'll just leave it at that. It's quite a few emails. It's um all documented. And um, right now, our email is up and working just fine, and we're transitioning to a new service. So we're going to look forward uh to working with the new vendor, which I think is is working out quite well. And um, yeah, we we have the Microsoft Exchange server all signed up for the new email. We're just getting our archive emails moved over. That could take about another five days. So once that's all done, it's done for good, and we we look, we're continuing to look forward on that transition.
Did you have anything further, councilmember, you talk, Sean?
Oh, no, um, we'll just deal with the issues in due course, and the I T committee can can take a look at what the uh email history looks like and make sure that um, everything is dealt with so that the city archives are complete, public records are handled appropriately, and uh everything uh goes properly in terms of uh the city having its resiliency and its backups in place, and hopefully not having disruption occur in the future. So.
So should we put this on the April fifteenth, the 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 date that we decided to meet in person on that calendar with I T committee giving us a report? As an head or committee at that time, and uh our our city manager giving his report? And have a formal agenda item at that time? Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, probably that second weekend April should be, probably do well.
Yeah, and that's our testing site for the person meeting as much as possible. All right, sounds good. Uh, any other questions, comments? Okay, uh, so so if you could please make a note of that, and still let us and possibly put it, put it on that agenda. The second week of April, probably gives everybody enough time. Any other comments, questions? Not else. I don't think we have anything else. Oh, yeah, we do have to remember, we have another close session. Uh, that's a, I should announce that, that's a letter. It's regarding an anticipated uh litigation arising out of our membership with the Cities Association. Uh, the letters of Santa Cruz County City officials was attached to the agenda. And we are going to be moving to that close session. And at this time, we'll leave this session and move to the second close session. I believe attorney Rudin sent us a separate Zoom link for the second close session, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, councilor.
Oh, I I wasn't sure that I had received it. Did you, did you send it to the city email, or did you send it to the others?
Um, I sent it to the other one, and I will resend it to you now.
Yeah, just send it to everybody, to their mind, might make it easier.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll leave and we'll join back in about five minutes, so just a five-minute break, seven, it's nine fifteen, so nine twenty, we'll meet again. Thank you.
I just want the record to reflect that I beat Mr. Makachev back to the meeting for the first time.
Is this isn't being recorded yet, is it?
It is.
Oh sure it is. It's in the record.
It is. It's in the record.
Can't believe I lost that.
You're so quick on the draw usually.
Soon as we have the mayor, we have a quorum.
Yeah, and if he doesn't show up shortly, you're just gonna have to step in.
Yeah, we have a quorum now.
Give him another 30 seconds.
There he is.
You're on mute, mayor.
All right. Good good evening. We're just returning from our closed session. There's nothing to report. And there are there's nothing else on the agenda, so we're going to close this meeting out. Thank you. I don't think we need to do anything else again, right?
No, I'll put note for the record that we have councilman Muto, councilman Reterner, Mayor Metcalf, and Mayor Wapiti.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Good night everybody and thank you very much.
Bye.
Bye bye.